Testing. Good evening, everyone. This is the Dania Beach City Regular Meeting on March the 11th, 2025. It is 7:18 PM and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Yes. Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Romoli.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan. City Attorney Bootsis.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Abicorm.
Thank you, City Clerk. If we could all now please bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have Presentations and Special Event Approvals. We have Item 3.1, Request for Proclamations. However, I do have two items under Presentations pursuant to Resolution Number 2024-079. I would like to request approval via a motion and a vote to allow for both items. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Llewellyn.
Make a motion to approve. Is that 3.1?
Yes.
No, I think the motion was to allow for Mayor Davis's two additional items under the Presentations section. That's the current motion.
Is that 3.2 and 3.3?
Correct.
Then I will move to approve those.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commission, for allowing me to have these two presentations. Item 3.1 is for Request for Proclamation Approval. National Autism Acceptance Awareness Month, April 2025, sponsored by Mayor Davis. Miss Alice Fairchild Butler, sponsored by Mayor Davis. And Retro Approval for Women in Construction Week. That was March the 2nd through the 8th, 2025, sponsored by Mayor Davis. Do I have consensus for Item 3.1?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have consensus. So Item 3.1 passes. Next, we have Item 3.2, Marine Advisory Board Update, sponsored by Mayor Davis. Stacy Brown, are you in the house? I don't see Stacy. Okay, I will come back and we will move on to Item 3.3. I Was Here Program Presentation by Amanda DeRoxstra. Hope I didn't butcher your last name. Okay. I'll put it on for her. I got it.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Amanda DeRoxstra and I am here as the Events and Community Coordinator at Mad Arts. We've had the privilege of working with the I Was Here Project since 2022. Some of the large things that we have done with that project has been presenting on the Freedom Tower in New York City in October of 2023. It was a 10-story display that could be seen across the city and it opened up the question of why I'm here. The center of I Was Here is a message of descendants of nation builders through carefully crafted spirit portraits and incredible workshops that bring communities closer with the message of why we are all here. I would like to present this presentation now and then afterwards I'll share a little bit about what I'm asking for. I'm not the tech person at Mad Arts, so hopefully this works out. Well, I'm the people person, not the tech person, so we'll see how this goes. So I Was Here is a project that started in Kentucky but is now making its way as a chapter in South Florida. We've actually just opened that chapter two months ago. Marjorie, she is the head of this project. I Was Here started off as an introduction to Kentucky to open up the conversation of descendants of nation builders for enslaved individuals to have the rights to talk about their ancestors building some of the most monumental buildings that have been, you know, present in the United States. Now bringing that to South Florida, we really want to open up that opportunity to children specifically to talk about how they are descendants of nation builders and why that is important, so.
I would love for you to hear my voice. I am bold and I am beautiful and I am here. I am the dream of my ancestors. I am their dream, become real. I would love for you to hear my voice. I am bold and I am beautiful and I am here. I am the dream of my ancestors. I am their dream, become real.
So this is the beginning of the spirit portraits. They were selected individuals that we felt, Marjorie felt, represented these enslaved individuals to really give voice to these historic buildings. And so these portraits are absolutely stunning and have been displayed on tapestries. But as well, what Mad Arts did is we took these portraits and we animated them to bring them to life. And that has been a project that has now gone into, like I had mentioned earlier, to New York City, all across Kentucky, and we're trying to bring that down here to South Florida. This is actually one of the largest sale sites in Kentucky where Marjorie actually first had her studio. And when she looked out, she realized that there was a missed opportunity to talk about the past and this was the beginning of I Was Here.
Hi, my name is Patrick Mitchell. I'm the photographer with I Was Here. And when I was approached for the project with the idea that ancestral spirit images would be surrounding the courthouse on Cheepside where people were bought and sold. It was phenomenal and I just knew it was going to be a healing to souls who were bought and sold, who lived through that trauma and who know about it today.
That's one of the images of the spirit portraits hanging in Kentucky. So this is the project that Mad Arts was able to accomplish on the Freedom Tower. You can see how large it is. It's over 30 stories high and was able to be seen throughout the city. And it created a giant impact into starting the conversation of who was here and who built this nation. So what I'm asking for today is we want to start a plan of four workshop series that will empower children ages 13 to 17 to see themselves through the descendants of this nation. We have the amazing Darius Dotree, who is not able to join me tonight. He will be hosting these workshops on behalf of I Was Here. Darius is a poet, a social critic, and an educator who will bring passion and flair to the participants of these workshops. We will wrap up the series with a final open mic presentation that will allow participants the opportunity to share their words, their thoughts about themselves, their important pasts, and most importantly, their futures.
My ancestors built this country. I stand on the backs of those that paved the way for me to have a voice. I'm not here by mistake. I will be your fence surrounding you with love. I will not let them destroy you. I am here. I am the soul, the spirit, the conscience. The country we built has our name on each brick laid for the building, each tar drive for the roads, and each iron rod that penetrated the water to build the bridges. I'm a seed. I was planted to grow. I am water, clear as day or night. I'm a requirement for survival and a lesson in measurement. I am the roots. I'm the core. I was here. I stand tall and strong, just as that maple tree's branches stretch wide. My roots are deep in the soil of this land. This land, this land is my land. I was here. I am my ancestors' faith turned flesh. Kings and queens we are and forever will be. I was here. We are here.
So that's the, one of the participants that spoke at, or took one of the workshops and that was the words that she decided to share after doing this empowering workshop and what it meant to her to be a descendant of nation builders. We really want to impact the youth here in Dania Beach, specifically South Florida, to really open up that conversation about what it is to be a nation builder. And I just want to thank you so much for your time and we're asking for some support in order to bring that down here.
Thank you, Amanda. It was a wonderful presentation. As you all know, we are Broward's first city. We value our history and I know this is Commissioner Ryan's jam to have anything historical with the city and especially with the children. So I just wish we had been able to have a little bit better audio. You know, I had some issues downloading it. So maybe if there's another opportunity that we can fix that audio. But the images were stunning. Your presentation was amazing. I just would like for the Commission to be able to see the presentation or at least the PowerPoint in full, so if we could work on getting that together. But I certainly do appreciate that and thank you for investing in children and what you're doing. And I would love to see something like this as long as we can get all the pieces of the puzzle together. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And up next, we have Item 4, Proclamations. And it is Women's History Month, March 2025. I will be reading. We have some special guests in the house. Let's please recognize Post 209, American Legion. We also, we also have our Post 304, Women's Auxiliary. From Post 304, please give a round of applause. And we have our Historical Women's Club in the house. So let's give them a round of applause. And that is who we are recognizing specifically during this Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to focus on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing American women who have built, shaped, and improved our nation. And whereas American women have led movements for social and economic justice, made groundbreaking scientific discoveries, enriched our culture with stunning works of art and literature, charted bold directions in our foreign policy and served as leaders in public service. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and others creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas the 2025 theme Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations celebrates the collective strength of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership. And through their efforts, they have served as an inspiration for all generations. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in every branch of the United States Armed Forces, playing an indispensable role in the defense and protection of our nation and in supporting our military, whether they are veterans, active duty, or through the Women's Auxiliary Organizations. And whereas the city of Dania Beach pays tribute to American Legion Post 304 and its Women's Auxiliary and American Legion Post 209. And its Women's Auxiliary. And do acknowledge the heroic contributions of these Dania Beach women have made and continue to make in our city, state, and nation. And whereas the city of Dania Beach recognizes the Dania Beach Women's Club founded in 1907, the oldest women's club in Broward County, which to this day continues to thrive as a vibrant women's organization that works to benefit the Dania Beach community. And whereas during Women's History Month, let us honor the accomplished and visionary women who have helped build our country, including those who have not been adequately recognized. And let us celebrate these trailblazers for building a nation of endless possibilities and for all its women and girls. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Joyce L. Davis, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in the city of Dania Beach and encourage citizens to join us in applauding the many ways that women's history has become woven into the fabric of our national story. Let's celebrate all women. Shall we give everyone a hand? And at this time, I would like for our Women's Auxiliary, all of our Women's, Post 204, Post 304, and Post 209, along with our Women's Club, to come and accept a proclamation each for your own organization and take a photo. Come on up. Ms. Ivy and Joan and Jessica, if you guys would want to hold, we'll try to. Oh, Commander, I'm sorry. Commander, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, we'll correct it. We want everybody to come on up. Come on up.
Come on down.
Oh, come on in. All the women, all the women. We're celebrating our women. We're celebrating all the women. Let's go, everybody. All the women, all the women. No.
No, the three guys can stay.
You have to get out?
I love when she starts organizing.
Yeah, she knows how to do. Yeah, she needs to be in one, two, three. Bye-bye. Suzette is directing. Bye.
Going over.
Go stand in the corner.
Time out, time out.
Go stand in the corner.
Time out.
Come on, come on down. He's trying to, he wants the photobomb. That's what he does. Are we centered?
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. No, I love it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Like cookies and more cookies and lots of snacks and cheese. And I'm like, I had to kill.
Congratulations to our, both of our posts and to all the amazing women who do such wonderful work each and every day. We appreciate all the women in our community and keep rising, keep shining, keep showing us the way. We appreciate each and every one of you. And now we will move on to our administrative reports. Oh, come on, fellas. You can come back now. That's so gentlemanly of you. And now we will move on to our administrative reports with our first Cuban-American city manager, Anna Madam Garcia.
Thank you, and the first female.
First female.
Ever.
Ever.
In 120 years.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. This is really all about you and the team, the job that they're doing. So this past weekend, if you weren't at the Dania Beach Wine and Seafood Festival, you missed a tremendous event. The VIP section was totally sold out and in six hours that we had this event, we had over 6,000 people come. And I've never seen so many people happy dancing. I mean, I've never seen, I've seen Joyce dancing, I mean, the mayor dancing, but I had never seen like the Commissioner Romoli dancing. It was truly a remarkable event and I want to make sure that you all have in your calendar our next Dania After Dark, which will be blues and barbecue, April the 12th. Please put that on your calendar. And a shout out to our Parks and Recreation Director, Cassie. Fantastic job. Another one of our outstanding women. And our marketing team, Nanette and Suzette did a fantastic job. So, so grateful. Our new finance director, a tremendous job with all the funding and ensuring. Jamie Guzman. Thank you, thank you so much. So Malican Park is ahead of schedule. We're extremely excited. The park is looking beautiful and we're ready to plan our ribbon cutting. So I just wanted to see everybody's schedule for April the 22nd for ribbon cutting at 5:00. It's a Tuesday of the Commission meeting, but there's no CRA meeting.
When is that?
April the 22nd. So it's the.
Yeah, that's not going to work for me, that 22nd. Oh, my goodness.
So what I'll do then is I'll send like three dates to Maxine. We could actually do it even earlier, but I'm trying to max the time, the time that you are here because you're all very busy. So I will give you all like three or four dates. Any dates that you're not available, let me know. So I'll work with Maxine, but very, very, very exciting. And if you haven't been by Malican Park, it just looks fantastic. So this past Wednesday, March 5th, I was able to have a meeting with Francisco Rojo from the Landmark Group. And by the end of this month, 40% of the units will be occupied. They're working with Ralph Stone and Bean Fur to really have a truly remarkable ribbon cutting event. And they wanted to see if May 13th, they wanted to see if we could do it at 4:00, 4:30 because they will be inviting the county. So I wanted to see everybody's schedule for May 13th. By that time, we should have about 80% of all the residents already moved up. So if you guys are good for May 13th or around 4:00, 4:30, I'll have your Chief of Staff send an invite. Our newly promoted CFO has hit the ground running. One of the things that she recognized last year is our Mayor and City Commission wanting to meet with us early on. And what we would like for you all to start thinking already is what are your top three priorities for the budget? So then we're going to be scheduling a workshop with you in April. So next month, basically. So this, we want to be ahead of the curve and this is very, very exciting. So Candido and I want to ensure the success of all our departments and we're very excited to report that CFO, to create a better check and balance, we're going to be having a Daryl report to Candido and we're working with procurement until October the 1st, until Jamie gets up and running to ensure her success in the Finance Department. On Thursday, February the 27th, we had a leadership retreat at the beautiful Talata Estate in Palmetto Bay. And these relationships have allowed us to be able to use this facilities at no cost to the city. So we have 20 of our senior members in an educational workshop session that truly was remarkable. We're always investing in our leaders and just being able to go and have this retreat at no cost to the city based on these fantastic relationships. And now we're going to develop a program between our Parks Department and their Parks Department. So we're very, very excited about that. On Tuesday, March the 2nd, our Deputy Manager and I met with Arnaldo Suarez. We really have developed a great relationship with the General Manager of the casino. Just a fantastic individual. And as you all know, we have some challenges in parking at the beach. So these challenges, we come with challenges, but we come with solutions as well. As you know, we've been able to seize 100 parking spaces at FAU and our City Attorney has done a great job. We now will be able to have valet parking when you go to Lucky Fish. Earlier today, the Vice Mayor and I met with the team from Quarterdeck. So whatever we offered to Lucky Fish, we're going to offer to the Quarterdeck. So we'll be able to now have future valet parking at the beach. We were also able to secure over 50 free parking spaces at the casino and we're going to be working on a shuttle program to be able to move our people around. But we're really excited about everything that's going on in the city and all these great partnerships. So that concludes my report. And don't forget, April 12th, Dania After Dark. You don't want to miss Blues and Barbecue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, City Manager. Next, we have Item 5.3, City Attorney, 5.2, City Attorney Report.
I'm sorry, I forgot one key thing.
Hold on, let's go back.
Sorry, my bad. I took off my glasses thinking I could read it. But since last year, we've been working with Commissioner AJ Ryan, has he's a big- But since last year, we've been working with Commissioner A.J. Ryan, as he's a big supporter of our veterans. So just like last year, we did this ribbon cutting on Arts Park, which was a great initiative by Mayor Davis. Soon, we're going to be working on the second phase of our future veterans park. So when you go outside, you're going to see a total connectivity, I mean, 20 pallets of sod. We have seven brand-new light posts with LED lighting to be able to move forward with Phase 1 of our future veterans park that has also allowed us to expand the footprint for Dana After Dark. So, oh, and one more thing. So I know there's so many exciting things going on. So the mayor and I were talking about initiatives, about bringing the community together in unity. It's been one of her top priorities. How do we unite the community in this diverse community? So we're going to be working with all our different churches and synagogues and pretty much all the clergy here and work on our first annual National Day of Prayer with the mayor. Mayor, do you want to talk a little bit about it or?
Well, we can't, you know, I will talk a little bit, but it is something that I believe, I know that when I go to the posts, when I've done the four chaplain ceremony, we talk about the fact that we're all from different religions. We may have different backgrounds. We may call God by different names. But at the end of the day, I believe prayer is a very important part of our community. It's a very important part of who we are regardless of the churches that you go to. I know that St. Ruth's is probably, I think, 116 this year and, or 17, where is she? 116. And so we have a lot of history with our churches, and so we just wanted to think about a way to bring everyone together with the National Day of Prayer or National Day of Prayer Day.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, city manager, for bringing that.
Yes, and that's going to be May 1st. Just want to, we wanted to make sure that we got support from the rest of our elected officials to bring the community together on May 1st. We seek consensus. Thank you so much, and thank you, mayor.
Thank you, city manager. So now we will move on to the city attorney, item 5.2, city attorney.
Well, the city manager is always a tough person to follow, but I'll make it short. I just wanted to introduce our new assistant city attorney. I'm going to ask her to just stand up and wave. There's Luis Figueroa. And just a little bit about Mr. Figueroa, I know him for many years, and he's a Harvard graduate, former city attorney for Doral. And he's been here for about a week now and working out great.
Thank you so much, city attorney. And now we will move on to item 5.3, city clerk reminders.
Thank you, mayor. So your next meeting is scheduled for March 31st at 7:00 PM. And then the following week right after that, you have your April 8th city commission meeting at 7:00 PM, yeah, 7:00 PM as well. And CRA, I'm sorry, at 5:30 PM. So just keep that in mind. They are one week apart.
Thank you, city clerk. And up next, we have item 6, public safety reports with our own Captain Jason Tarral. Yes, give him a hand. We love him. Oh, let me help you. You got it?
There we go. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city attorney, city manager. To start with, so earlier this week, we worked a case over at 210 Northeast Second Court, and one of our detectives authored a felony probable cause affidavit for this individual. This individual was wanted for written threats to kill through threats of intimidation, as well as criminal mischief over $1,000, and as well as trespassing. This has been an ongoing investigation into this individual. We began surveillance over at the residence. Once this individual got inside his vehicle, our SWAT team who was watching in their undercover vehicles did a vehicle intervention technique in which they were able to successfully stop this individual before he left his residence. And he was placed in custody without incident and taken to the main jail for the felony charges that he is now facing. Also earlier this week, when our deputies were on routine patrol in the area of 1208 South Federal Highway, they observed an individual that they know is a convicted felon, what they believed was smoking illegal narcotics. Upon making contact with this individual, they indeed verified that he was smoking illegal narcotics. They detained him based on that, and through their search, they discovered multiple firearm ammunition rounds in his pocket as well as receipts for firearms that he recently purchased. This individual was a convicted felon, meaning he's not allowed to have any ammunition on his person. So on top of being arrested for the felony narcotics, he was also arrested for the felony possession of ammunition by a convicted felon, and he was taken to jail. And again, earlier this week, over at the Motel 6, we had a call of two individuals who were trespassing at the Motel 6 after warning. Upon arrival, our deputies made contact with one of the individuals, and they began to conduct their investigation. And they observed the individual smoking marijuana. They confirmed he did not have a medical marijuana card. Once they went to detain the individual, he threw his bag down and began to flee on foot. Our deputies were able to successfully taser the individual, get him into custody. Search ensued to arrest of that individual. We found a bunch of felony narcotics on his person. We found a bunch of cannabis, oxycodone pills, as much as other narcotics. We went back and recovered the bag that the individual threw down, and inside the bag was a fully loaded firearm that he is a convicted felon, that obviously he was not allowed to have in his possession. So we were able to successfully recover that firearm, and that individual is arrested for all the felony charges that he is now facing. I also wanted to highlight, going piggybacking off the city manager, on this past weekend, we had for Dana After Dark, and we also have spring break going on throughout the city at Dana Point. And I just want to highlight to the commission, to the manager, and all the residents here tonight, when you have two major, two major beautiful events going on, like Dana After Dark in Dana Point Spring Break, from a law enforcement perspective, the planning that goes in to make sure that both of these events are safe for all of our residents, there's a lot that goes into that. I am involved, Lieutenant Romano is involved in the planning with everyone involved. And when I can tell you that both events went off with a single hitch without a single security concern, that really is kudos to my staff, to my members who work so hard, the city manager, making sure we have the resources in place. And that's thousands and thousands of people coming into the city for events and not a single issue from a law enforcement standpoint. Kudos to everyone that's involved in that. And obviously, obviously, we want to keep that going at every event, but there really is, I want to let you all know, there is a lot of planning that goes into all these major events from a law enforcement standpoint. Lieutenant Romano is the one that brought in those barricades that we had. We had them out there again for Dana After Dark. And those are significant not to allow any vehicles to come up and down the road. And I believe we got those again for the next Dana After Dark. We'll have them out there as well. And at last, just want to finish off that, obviously, we just talked about Dana After Dark. We'll have our, I'm sorry, spring break. We'll have our deputies on the beach for spring break going forward, starting this weekend. And we also have our operation plan going forward through the rest of March over at spring break because Dana Point is actually very, very busy, but no issues, knock on wood. But there's definitely an increase in volume of people visiting Dana Point, college kids and teenagers because it's spring break. That completes my report.
Thank you so much. Wonderful, wonderful job. Captain Chief, we can just call you chief, and thank you so much. I mean, you guys have been beyond outstanding, so we appreciate you keeping our community safe.
Yeah, keep it going.
Alright, and up next, we have our very own fire chief, BSO Chief Sergio Pelissero.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city manager, city staff, and the great citizens of Dana Beach. So I wanted to let you know that both our BSO police and fire team made the city a little bit safer over the last couple of days. Along with the Robin Foundation and Forest Department of Health, we went out to 38 hotels and passed out Narcan. Hopefully, this will help the hotels. The hotels are very grateful that they are able to have this now and hopefully save somebody's life in case they may need it. This was a no-cost item, and like I said, the management at these hotels were very, very grateful that we were able to do that for them and deliver the lifesaving Narcan. I want to give you a quick update on our Quint Refreshment, our fire truck that went out to get fixed last September. It's scheduled to be refurbished. It will return sometime this coming December. We'll place it back in service by January of '26. So yes, so you know, this enhances the capabilities to reach the multi-story buildings that we have. It also adds an additional five to seven-year lifespan to our fire truck. And on September 24th, we had 17 new recruits start. Now, they're going to go through 10 weeks of training. So the next 10 weeks, they'll be training every single day, and that's over 400 hours of training. Now, part of that training will be tomorrow. They go into what is called a Mass Casualty Incident Drill, which is basically they get to learn how to deal with large-scale emergencies. Hopefully, they'll never have to deal with that in their career, but they'll be ready. And with that, if you have any questions, it's all part of my report.
Thank you so much, chief. Great job. Appreciate you. Give him a hand. And up next, we have citizens' comments, and we will start with, let me see here, Ms. Patricia Tyra, Ms. Pat Tyra, come on up and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Patricia Tyra from 2912 Southwest 54th Street, the estates of Fort Lauderdale here in Dana Beach. Mayor, commissioners, staff, and everybody listening, I want to say thank you to Parks and Recreation for announcing that they will be opening the pier, Dana Beach Pier, to the seniors sometime in April. I have quietly campaigned for that for a number of years, and I still have my pass for parking, which we got as seniors over 10 years ago. And so I'm looking forward to being back, to walking on the pier.
Thank you for that great news, and thank you for recognizing our Park and Recreation Department. And I will also thank our commission for approving that and making a little bit better quality of life for our seniors. Thank you. Next, is it Linda Wilson? You have another comment? Yes, come on up and please state your name for the record, please.
Linda Wilson, I'm here as the president of the Friends of the Dana Beach Library, and I have handed out a letter to you all in support of something that I believe was brought to you at last commission meeting by Overell Dwyer regarding Love Our Nation and their activities and services and their desire to have a piece of property on which they could build a facility. I have worked with Overell since she began this program, Love Our Nation, and from, you know, farm-to-table type of situation, we have worked with her, with the Dana Beach Library, for bringing her children over to many programs. I personally, as the president, bring them boxes and boxes of books in addition to filling the Free Little Libraries at The Patch and at The Frost Park. So I would really support your consideration of possibly one of the properties that you have that might not be suitable for building infill housing. I know that Overell will work very hard at securing funding for construction. She has many contacts, and I would truly encourage you to consider that request. She is an asset to this community. You have no idea. The other thing I wanted to bring up was has to do with Resolution Number 9 and the contract transferring over to CRA, which I don't think I truly got all my answers, but one of the things I believe I heard from the city attorney, and correct me if I am wrong, that the executive director of the CRA would have to maintain his title and, no, and he would still be, he would still be having CRA meetings, and he would be present as a department head? You said, department head.
The city attorney, me. I'm just to clarify, the title would change to director?
Right.
And the office of the city manager, someone from there would be the executive director. But all of his responsibilities would be the same. He would not change any of those. He would be at the meetings. He's not going anywhere.
But he would not be able to make his reports without the approval of the city manager. I personally feel this is a defective decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and I'm going to ask our city clerk to keep you abreast of when we have the meeting for the properties for the CRA so that when we do finalize a date for that, that Ms. Wilson can voice her concerns or can voice her desire to have Love Our Nation, to have a property at that meeting. Next up, we have Ms. Janet Combs. Please come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Janet McCombs, 41 Southwest 5th Street. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city manager, and staff. I'm here to just say thank you to the Lucky Fish. We went to the beach the other night, and we noticed our Dana Beach Improvement Committee marker was put back in place. Very, very happy about that. We were worried. The trees aren't there, but they put new coconuts back that we had, had five trees there. Here to also speak about the renaming of the IT Parker meeting, the banquet hall. I just want everyone to know, the history needs to remain with that building. I know it's just a banquet hall, but 10% of Mr. Parker's will, the money of his estate, went to the city, and the city used those funds to build this building. We know there was a mural of him, a portrait, in that building. We hope it's still there. We haven't a chance to go back and look, but to maintain his history of the city is so important for us. My husband was named after Mr. Parker, and not many people know his real full name, Iverson Terrell Parker. My husband's born and raised in Dana, lives here 64 years, and his father and Iverson Terrell Parker were friends, very good friends. So I just want to make sure the city maintains the integrity of that building to keep his memory alive and what he did for the city. We're just losing so much history. I have the mural here, and I have the history of he and his wife, who was actually killed on Dana Beach Boulevard crossing the roadway. So it's a really sad story for his wife, but I really want to maintain this history, please.
I would like to see it and pass it around to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCombs, for your comments, and that item is on our agenda this evening that we will be considering. So thank you for letting us know your concerns. And next, we have Howard P. Clark III. If you would come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Howard Clark, on behalf of Mr. Shawn DeRosa with the Law Offices of Hartzell, Osier, PA. His address would be 408 Southeast 5th Street. I'm here to discuss the short-term ordinance that Dana Beach has and the lack of enforcement of it. Typically, you hear about noise, trash, traffic. Occupancy was two weeks ago. However, this time, I would like to talk about Section K. The rules of the road for short-term rentals were laid down by Dana Beach 14 years ago. Section K of the ordinance was adopted to protect the most vulnerable members of the Dana Beach community, the children, the elderly, the disabled, from sexual offenders. The lack of enforcement of the Dana short-term ordinance, short-term rental ordinance, is putting the most vulnerable members of your community at unnecessary risk because you are failing to enforce the code. Lack of enforcement, what do I mean? The city cannot tell me all of the Airbnbs within a 2,500 proximity range required by the code that are required to provide documentation, keep documentation for two years of who's a sexual offender. Ask the people that are coming into their properties if they are sexual offenders. The city of Dana can't tell me how many sexual offenders were in and out of your neighborhoods within the last week, within the last month, within the last six months. The city of Dana Beach cannot tell me today how many sexual offenders are staying in these short-term rentals tonight. If the city can't tell me, it's because they don't know. And if the city doesn't know, the community doesn't know. We understand short-term rentals provide revenue to the city, but at what point does the safety of the most vulnerable members of your community outweigh the additional revenue of these short-term rentals? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving on, next... And moving on, uh, next, we have Item Eight, the Consent Agenda. Do, uh, does the commission wish to pull any items from the commis- uh, from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, pass, uh, the Consent Agenda, Item Eight, eight point, all the way through.
Do I have, do I have a second, uh, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'll second the motion to pass the Consent Agenda, being full.
With a lot of them.
Commissioner Ryan, did you have something to say?
Uh, yeah, uh, since we have approval for the Consent Agenda, I just wanted to add to the public, since it's public record, that, uh, three of these items added up to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grants, Item Five, Six, and Seven. And it's great work by our, our city team and, uh, our, our grant writers. So, thank you once again, and way to bring money into the city of Dania Beach, four hundred and twenty-five thousand in grants. Thank you, Chair.
Good job, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Ryan. I, I was, I was had that on my notes, and I was going to forget. So, no, I'm glad you brought that up because, uh, it, it is a great job. And to reiterate that, four hundred and twenty-five thousand in grants, and that is in four staffing positions for our BSO Fire. Is that correct? So, we are keeping our city safe, and we are saving money. So, great job by all. Thank you, uh, commission for passing Item Eight of the Consent Agenda. Moving on to, oh, do I have, I had a motion and a second. Do I have consensus, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Item Eight, Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, we will move on to Item Nine, bids and requests for proposals. There are none. So, we will move on to quasi-judicial and public hearings. Uh, this is only a public hearing. Eve, if you would please read Item Ten Point One.
Yes, ma'am. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, after public hearing, approving the requests made by Commissioner Luisa Remoli to name the banquet hall at IT Parker Community Center, the Chickie Brantimart Hall, located nine oh one Northeast Second Street, Dania Beach, Florida, provided for conflicts and an effective date. And this is sponsored by Commissioner Remoli.
All right, Commissioner Remoli.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eve. Uh, first of all, um, I want to make it very clear that we are not interested in renaming IT Parker anything other than IT Parker. And it will be everything I can do as a commissioner and as a resident of Dania Beach to maintain the history of our city. Um, I think that that's extremely important. It's number one on my list of things, along with, um, our former mayor and commissioner, A.J. Ryan. Um, I'm a big advocate of history, and, and, and I think, uh, it's, it's very important that we maintain it. But I, I, I bring this resolution forward because I have not met a stronger woman ever than Chickie Brantimarty. Um, and we've had our disagreements in the past, but she is a very strong force. Uh, it's apropos that it is Women's Month, March, that we bring this resolution forward. For the past twenty-six years, Chickie has been the president and steady force behind now thriving Seniors Club. It meets monthly at IT Parker. Uh, this is where our seniors come to hear about city programs, events, safety in our community. It's also the perfect place for friends to enjoy each other, entertainment, find a dance partner. Um, I try to make every meeting as much as I can, and it's a lovely time meeting great people. For twenty-six years ago, um, we really couldn't say this about the Seniors Club. Uh, when Chickie took it over, uh, it was my understanding, there was only about thirty members or so. Um, now, the senior club has over two hundred members in the club, and actively, a hundred or so members consistently come to her meetings every single month. Uh, in addition to these meetings that, um, Chickie, um, and her hard-working board, I might add, does, they organize special events for our seniors in our community. These events and these trips organized by Chickie and her team, it's a tremendous amount of work involved in it. I do events, so I know. It's not, you just don't say, hey, we're gonna go here and, you know, sign people up. There's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes. Uh, in addition to all of this, over the last twenty-six years, Chickie also ran for commission in our city. I believe she didn't win twice, maybe, or once, I think, but she did win twice. Um, she had, she was a commissioner in our city from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen, and also from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty. She is a force, and she was a force for our seniors and our entire community. During her term as an elected official, she fought for our seniors, all residents, and with her unique style, and if you all ever came to a commission meeting, you know what I mean by unique style, sometimes controversial, but you can always guarantee that it would be fun at these commission meetings. Um, Chickie has made Dania Beach her forever home, along with her family. And I think about this often, twenty-six years of service, that's a quarter of your life. That's a long time to dedicate your time, donate your time to our seniors and our residents of this great city. And I can't think of a better way to acknowledge her service and her, and appreciation and gratitude for the twenty-six years of service that she has contributed than to name a banquet hall at, at IT Parker that is currently not named after Chickie Brantimarty. And I would also add, um, that this item, this resolution, came before the Parks and Recreation Board, who voted unanimously for us to be able to do this. And I hope that our commission, um, will also be in favor of this. I think it is a great tribute to a great lady, and I thank you, Chickie, for all your service that you've done for our city. Thank you.
All right, uh, do we have any, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, do I have any comments from the commission? I have- Um, Vice Mayor?
Hi, Chickie. Why don't you put your hand up, so everybody knows who you are over there? If you don't already. Chickie, I gotta tell you, that servant of the commission, uh, my first time around, I couldn't have done it without you because you were a big support up here, gave you a lot of strength and a lot of knowledge. You are good for this city, and you deserve everything that you get for all the hard work you put out. People that don't see it may not understand, but we know what you've done for the city, and you are well-deserving of having a room named after you. So, I just, uh, uh, thank you for all the service you give to the city.
Any other comments from the commission? Uh, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Chickie. I can't believe you're here. Like, I know, 'cause you were, we didn't even know if you were gonna make it tonight, right? So, um, Chickie hasn't been feeling well, so just so that you all know that. But, um, in any event, I'm glad to see you, and I wanna thank you for your twenty-six years of service and for growing this seniors organization the way that you have. It's, it's tremendous. And, um, I'm proud to make it to as many of those meetings as I can myself as well. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Llewellyn. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I have a couple of points to make. First of all, thanks, Chickie, for coming in tonight. Uh, we definitely appreciate, uh, the contribution dedication that Chickie has made to the city. Uh, but when it comes to naming something after someone in the city, I take it very seriously. And for this item, I really don't see a sufficient amount of backup, um, on, on the item. I would like to see more of a backup. Usually, this comes with a bio. There's not even a bio on this. And I don't wanna take away from her individual accomplishments and dedication, but I feel like there needs to be a better process with the city when it comes to, uh, naming, uh, city-owned areas, uh, you know, the, the, first of all, this is the IT Parker Center. I don't wanna take away from IT Parker. I don't feel that there should be a second name in that building. This was IT Parker. He donated, uh, a lot of money from his estate to create this. He was a leader in Dania Beach. He helped establish multiple businesses here. He established the first Bank of Dania. He lent out loans at a great rate. This was a great man who was in the city for sixty-eight years, I believe. He not only dedicated and his time and money to Dania Beach, but he donated money to multiple cities. So, this man was actually instrumental in, in South Florida overall. And that's why I think the, the center should just remain IT Parker Center. I don't think there should be another name on it. Uh, and, you know, honestly, an argument can be made for many individuals, uh, in Dania Beach. We're a hundred-and-twenty-year-old city. Uh, you know, why not name something after Jean Cook, who just passed away last year? She was the mayor of Dania Beach. How about Vera Hill? She was the first female, uh, mayor of Dania Beach, first female commissioner of Dania Beach. And she was instrumental in creating, uh, sewer systems in Southeast Dania and expanding Hy-Live. Those are two individuals that don't really get, get much recognition if we're gonna go there. And fortunately for the city, but unfortunately for certain individuals, there is a line to fall in, in order to get something named after you. And I feel like this is kinda skipping it. Like I said, I don't wanna take anything away from any individual, right? We don't take it any way, anybody's accomplishments. But I just feel like this is too important of a building to add another name in there. I'm not for naming it after anybody other than IT Parker. It's the IT Parker Center, and, you know, obviously, that's where you go, that there's a stage on the IT Parker Center. So, I don't feel like there's a need to name the stage. And, yep, I, I do thank Chickie Brantimart for being here. I, I thank her for her, her service as a commissioner on this commission and for leading the, the seniors. And this isn't taking away from anything, but there needs to be, I think, a better vetting process when it comes to this, especially for such an historic building and the contribution made by such individual like IT Parker. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, uh, Commissioner Ryan, for that. Um, I also, Chickie, want to thank you for your twenty-six years of service to the city of Dania Beach. Um, I have seen a hundred, a hundred and fifty seniors at all of your events, and, uh, the senior population, no matter what your race, background, I love our senior community like nobody's business, and it takes a strong personality to be able to run that, uh, for twenty-six years. Um, I will, though, um, weigh in on this in the fact that, uh, when the last, I believe, naming of a facility came up, that I did put it on the record. This is nothing personal, whether somebody, uh, you, this is subjective, whether you believe or don't believe somebody deserves, um, a certain name or facility. Um, but I did bring this up at the last naming of the facility. Uh, and so, I believe that the process is not clear. Uh, I believe we need to have specific criteria that ensures that anybody who makes an application, and Commissioner Remoli was not on the commission at the time. Um, but I did say that I wanted to, and I, I was going to meet with our city attorney, which I did. I met with the city, I've met with the city attorney in January, way before this was an agenda item. Excuse me. I met with the, oh, excuse me, I need the water. I met with the city attorney, I met with the assistant, uh, new assistant city attorney, the city manager, and the deputy city manager, um, because I believe that it's very important to have specific criteria. So, whether that criteria is historical, whether it's, uh, innovative, somebody did something for the first time, that, or whether it's time served, whatever that criteria is, it needs to be, uh, discussed, worked out with this commission, and be part of the process of naming a facility. Uh, we also have the naming of streets. When you have the naming of streets, I believe, Eve, it takes thirty percent, uh, from, can you, uh, reiterate what the criteria is for naming a street?
Sure. So, for a petition for a street naming, you need to get thirty percent of the, um, everybody within a, a certain radius. And that's basically if there are more than a hundred homes in the area, so you have to get thirty percent to sign a petition. And after the petition, you file the application. You have, uh, also, I believe, before the planning and zoning, I'm sorry, excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Board, and then it's a thousand-foot notice to everybody in the community and, uh, posting in front of the property, as well as an advertisement to the city commission, thirty-day notice.
Okay, so, thank you. There is very specific criteria for a street naming. And all we have here is, um, you know, approval from the Parks and Rec Board, which is four people. And we have, uh, you know, that would have taken a majority of the commission to, um, approve this. So, I don't believe the criteria is aligned. Um, in addition, what I had, uh, raised concerns about before is that when you're naming a facility after an individual, we need to have transparency of funds. The public needs to know what is, uh, what criteria, what is it going to cost. I still don't know what it's going to cost, uh, for the gym. I don't know what it costs to name a park after someone. These are, you know, items that I believe should be transparent to the public. And in looking at other cities, they have a naming committee, and so, they have different representatives from the community that weigh in on the naming facility to make sure that everybody in their community is, uh, made aware and abreast of what is being named, why it's being named. And again, we don't have, um, any backup on this. And so, with that, and then there's the, you know, the significance, you know, significance is vague. So, that's why we need to have the criteria, whether it's historical, whether it's innovative, whether it's time served. The process needs to be clear. It needs to be streamlined, more so in alignment like how the streets, uh, naming of the streets is aligned. So, it is not personal, but I'm a process-oriented person, and I want, if any one of you in the community wanted to name something after your relative or after your, somebody that you would have, you would know exactly what criteria you would need to meet in order to fit that. So, it's not personal. It is just a process that I think that needs to be addressed. Um, in addition, it was brought to my attention, and it is true that the last five namings or four namings have been from one elected official to another elected official. So, um, from Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn to, to, um, our beloved Commissioner Real Harris, from Commissioner Salvino to Commissioner, uh, James at the time. Now, we have another one on the, um, dais for Commissioner, uh, Llewellyn to Commissioner, former Commissioner Jones's wife. So, we just, you know, these are things that need to be considered when we're making these major decisions. Um, and so, I would just like to be able to speak about that, create that criteria. And if you meet that criteria, I'm here to celebrate. I wanna cut the ribbon. I wanna celebrate you. But I want it to be clear for every single resident that comes forward, and not just because you're an elected official, that you get to make this, um, you know, request, and then, and, and it only takes, you know, four to eight people to approve it. So, um, I'm just asking for us to be able to get together, to create the right criteria so that the process is smooth, it's transparent, the funds are transparent, and that we make a collective decision on how this process moves forward. So, thank you. Uh, those are my comments, and I will move to Vice Mayor Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, listening to, to our program that we're having here about, you know, whether you're, um, qualified or however you wanna put it, to, um, you know, whether we have the right criteria for that. You know, I, I look back at the, the IT Parker Center was built, donated, and the purpose of being donated was so that we have people to enjoy it. It's just that I feel that for someone to give twenty-six years of their life to encourage the seniors of our city, I would think Mr. Parker would like to see something like that happen. Um, I mean, he wasn't there to make a profit off of the building. He wasn't there to, uh, shut the building to not have an open use into it. And for him, for a person to come up and take and bring a hundred and, well, two hundred members and have a hundred and twenty active members, uh, that have a place to go and enjoy themselves, and, you know, it does, it doesn't come easy. And I think that, uh, if he was here, he would probably recognize it himself, maybe. I shouldn't put words in anybody's mouth, but, uh, recognize the, the contribution from a person that really has put a hundred percent effort into it. Uh, the, the point, it's not changing the name of the building. It's always gonna be IT Parker. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of places you'll see- there's a lot of places you'll see plaques, even out of the front of IT Parker Center. If you walk in the door, there's all kinds of name stones out there that were put down there. So all those name stones are there. So there is other involvement with other people's names. Those are contributions. Well, Chickie has contributed twenty-six years of being the president of the seniors' club, which has brought a lot of happiness and things to the people out there, putting tours together, and dinners together, and dances together. I mean, I don't see where someone should be recognized in a place that they utilize consistently for the betterment of the residents of Dania Beach. So, you know, my attitude is that we're not changing anything else. We're just giving a little recognition. The IT Parker Center will, like I say, always will be. And I'm not saying that our system is not right, but I do feel that recognition for certain people in this community, you the criteria start, you start curtailing it so badly that, that before you know it, nobody, I wouldn't want to be anything named after me if I hadn't listened to it, go that way and have to do. I mean, I, I mean, his family, Commissioner Ryan's family's done a lot. You know, you can look on the wall over there. My uncle was mayor back in the old days, royal days. And, you know, I don't, I don't ask for recognition for him, because I don't, you know, he was fire chief and everything else. But certain people do certain things in the city that I think when the time is a step up, you know, this may be an opportunity to do this. I just don't, I don't agree with you, Mayor, and Commissioner Ryan. I just feel that, you know, there's more to that, that recognition should be observed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will just say that, to me, you just made my point. So I would, I would just reiterate that that should be part of the criteria that we make, that somebody that who served this community, that should be part of the criteria. And then now we know anybody else going forward would, would fit that bill. That's all. It's just part of the process. Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor. And now I will move to Commissioner Ramoli.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I just wanted to clarify to everybody as well here is that we did, I did follow the criteria that we have set in place at this current time. I don't disagree with the mayor and anybody else. If we want to change the criteria, then let's do it. But this is not the time to debate it. It's been, the criteria was followed properly. And I think I would like to make a motion to move this item.
I'll second it.
And just for clarity, this is a four-fifths vote requirement.
Is it what?
Four-fifths vote requirement.
Okay. All right. So then, Miss, we have a motion. We have a second. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Longland?
Let me get my buttons in order.
Yes. Commissioner Ramoli?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Mayor, the motion fails.
All right. We will move on. And I hope we will be able to create that criteria in the future and celebrate Chickie in the very near future. Thank you. And next, we will move on to item...
Would you like me to read item eleven point one?
Yes. Please, Eve, read eleven point one.
An ordinance to the city commission amending chapter twenty-eight, the land development code, to provide certain technical updates, clarifications, and language cleanup to the code relating to green building procedures, off-street parking, landscaping requirements in the C R A district, planned small lot, mixed-use development, P M U D S U signage regulations, definitions, and terms of usage within the non-conforming use of structures in lots provision of the code and concurrency regulations relating to stormwater drainage level of service standards, provided for quantification, conflict, severability, and effective date. That was one long title.
Good evening.
Good evening, Corinne. Thank you.
Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director in Community Development. And this is first reading of a text amendment. And there are, I believe, seven different sections that we're proposing to modify today. And these are modifications to our land development code. This land development code went through a massive rewrite in 2010. So this is the, periodically, we need to update and revise based on that 2010 language. So that's what we're taking the opportunity to do today. The first proposed text amendment is to our green design practices. In this section, there's a list of different practices that a developer can choose from. All of the new development requires at least five of these green initiatives. Larger projects require ten. Here, we're proposing to add to the list by including dual flushing toilets as one of the options that can be chosen. The next section is off-street parking facilities. And this is to add language that says when parking exceeds the requirement, that that requirement above the minimum required can be shared. The third is regarding street landscaping and hardscape. And this is to allow administrative variance process if the existing swale is less than required by code. The administrative variance process is a variance that does not go to public hearing, but it's for very specific uses. So this would add one of those items to that process. The fourth is regarding the P M U D S L development requirements. This is the plan mixed-use small-scale developments. And this eliminates reference to the D G G, which is their development design guidelines, to determine the quality and timing of the RAC land use allocation. This is something that should be done at site plan. So we're amending the model of the language to reflect that, that as a site plan is approved, that's when the allocation gets identified on the project. The fifth is regarding temporary signs. And here, we're just doing some cleanup, and we're eliminating duplicate language that exists. The sixth is definitions and term usage. And here, we're removing conflicting language and cross-referencing with chapter twelve entitled Flood Damage Prevention. That section got modified a short while ago. So that's more updated language, and we'd like to use that. And number seven is the stormwater drainage. And this removes the building provisions, as similar regulations exist again in chapter twelve. That's the more new language, more updated. So we're just going to reference the language in chapter twelve. And that concludes the amendments that we're proposing tonight. This item did go to the Planning and Zoning Board in February, and they recommended approval to the city commission. And at this time, staff is recommending approval at first reading. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Corinne. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none.
Do I have a motion? Eleven point one, Mayor.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye. I believe the item passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. Item point one passes unanimously. Next, we have item eleven point two. Eve, if you could please read item eleven point two?
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance to amend chapter twenty-eighth land development code, article one-oh-five use regulations for residential and open space zoning districts, section one-oh-five-one-oh-six dash one-oh-six, accessory buildings and structures, creating section one-oh-five-two-sixty accessory dwelling units, amending article seven-twenty-five definitions at section seven-twenty-five-thirty, terms defined, amending article thirty special floor plan, building dimension, and building size standards at section two-thirty dash fifty, maximum allowed floor area for accessory buildings and structures in several districts, and amending section two-thirty dash forty minimum floor areas for dwelling and lodging units. In order to define accessory dwelling units and to create regulations and design guidelines for accessory dwelling units, providing for conflicts of variability and an effective date, this is community development.
Corinne, again, with community development. And this is another text amendment. It is first reading. But this regulations here, we're proposing new language to allow accessory dwelling units where they're currently not permitted in our code today. We found that everyone, affordable housing is an issue, you know, certainly regionally wide, but there could be an argument national, nationally as well. And so a lot of municipalities are looking at accessory dwelling units as one of the ways to increase housing options. So a lot of surrounding municipalities have created accessory dwelling unit regulations. It helps with family flexibility, affordable renting options, cares for elderly, elderly, even, you know, young adults launching, and workforce housing. So it provides a lot of housing options. We looked at the, a lot of surrounding communities in our area, and the eight municipalities on the screen also have some sort of A D U regulations. This amendment would allow accessory dwelling units to be added in existing single-family properties. The density of the zoning and underlying future land use designation is not being changed by way of this ordinance. So we're not proposing density changes at all. The Broward County land use does have a provision that allows for this. And as long as it is less than five hundred square feet, it's considered to be half a dwelling unit. So that's how we're allowing it in our existing fabric of zoning and land use. The density, as approved in the future land use, as I said before, is not being modified. So the underlying land use will remain. So where a larger property has additional density, an accessory dwelling unit could be added. The way we're defining accessory dwelling units in this amendment is it must have a minimum floor area of three-hundred-and-fifty square feet, not to exceed fifty percent of the principal structure. So it's still considered, you know, accessory to the primary, and no more than five hundred square feet. So we can still count it as half a unit. And there must be at least one parking space to support this use. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this item on February nineteenth, and they recommended approval. And at this time, staff's recommending approval at first reading. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Corinne. This is a public hearing. Do I have anyone that wishes to speak for or against this item? Come on up, Ms. Yavaka. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Yavaka Youngsmith, address two-six-three Southwest Third Terrace here in Dania Beach. And I am definitely in support. That was a surprise. I didn't know that was on the agenda tonight. But it definitely has been something that has been discussed. I know the city recently allowed the shipping container additions. But lots of us are wanting to have the additional options. Most of us have very small houses with aging parents and other considerations. It certainly would be a plus to be able to use these huge lots with these little teeny homes for additional space.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Do I have any discussion or motion? Oh, come on up. Yeah. I didn't know it was such a popular item.
Thank you. My name is Bajal Chadva, two-six-three-seven East Atlantic Boulevard, number one-zero-one-one in Pompano Beach. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This proposed ordinance applies to single-family homes. And I wanted to ask if the commission would consider expanding this proposed ordinance to also include duplexes. Many residential neighborhoods have a mix of single-family homes and duplexes in them. Their design and style are similar. Their site planning and permitting process is similar. So it may not be inconsistent to also include duplexes in this new proposed ordinance. As many people know, some of the apartment buildings in Dania Beach are asking north of two thousand dollars per month as rent for a studio. And by also allowing duplexes to add an accessory dwelling unit, more opportunities for affordable housing options would be made available to residents. I hope the city commission gives us some consideration, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Hold on. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hold on. Come back up, sir.
So, I hear you, because I know that area. And I know there's a lot of duplexes in the area. And I think a while back, we, I think your lot, I don't know if it's a duplex over there anymore or not. I know that the lot had to go to seventy-foot wide at that time, didn't it, to eighty-foot wide? So I don't know if the, if the lot would be wide enough that you're asking about. The other thing would be, too, is that when you talk about two thousand dollars a month for a studio, we've heard this a lot up here about bringing affordable housing into there. If you were to be able to add on another two-bedroom, one-bath, or two-bedroom, two-bath, what kind of rent would you be charging? Because today, the rents are going to be three thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred. And that's not really affordable. What it is, is it's something that you would be bringing in to change your income basis on the availability of the lot itself, which I understand. Okay? I'm in business, too. So I just don't know if, first of all, if the lots can be big enough to even make that, that, I mean, the code itself would have to be changed. And I don't know how wide your lot is. So there's more than to it than just adding the opportunity to make it a duplex. I think you need to, I'm open for discussion on it. I really am. But I think you need to go to your zoning department or planning zoning to find out if you're even able to do that on that size lot.
May I respond? May I respond?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah. My understanding is that if this was to be in the code to allow duplexes, then at that time, I would look at the next step to see if we meet the density requirements, the frontage requirements, the whatever requirements, the parking requirement. And if we don't, we don't. But I would also, as an investor, I may look at other properties that might be duplexes that may meet this requirement, and in which case, there would be a potential to add a studio.
I think I'm in favor of that, you know, to put a duplex out there. But I'm also in favor of, you know, trying to make the rents where, I mean, the whole idea for me is that if you're going to put a building on there, it would be somewhat, I'm not saying low income, because it's impossible, and affordable income is questionable. So, you know, that's, I just, I'm curious, before we oversize the property, is to make sure that it is something affordable. That's, that's just my comment.
I hundred percent agree that we need to make it affordable.
Yeah. So, I mean, you get into further discussion with planning zoning. You can always come back and make a change if we have to.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do I have a motion for item eleven point?
Make a motion, Mayor. We'll pass eleven point two.
Eleven point two. Got a motion from...
Commissioner Ryan has a...
Oh, you have a comment? I'm sorry. I didn't see. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just had a couple comments on this. And he brought, the gentleman here brought up a good point. When we're zoned for multi-family, it goes up to four units, correct? That's, that's the maximum amount of units that we can have on a multi-family lot? Because once you get up to five, you need a motel license, correct?
No. So it depends on...
For residential income, yeah.
I don't care who owns a building. It depends on the residential land use and density as to the number of units. The form of ownership is irrelevant to me in terms of zoning.
Okay. But I'm saying, when something is zoned for duplex, is something zoned for fourplex or triplex also?
No.
It's all multi-family. That's what I'm saying. So it's four units and below, correct?
Right. I have single family, I have duplex, and multi-family.
Okay, perfect. That's what I was thinking. So, yeah, to address the gentleman's question, this is just to approach residential, single-family home zoning. And I appreciate the city bringing this up. We discussed this, geez, I think, like, a year and a half ago, two years ago, in how we can tackle our housing shortage that we have, and how we can help our residents. I think this one helps the residents a lot, especially those with senior citizens, maybe a kid coming back from college. And, you know, let the public know that you still have to build these two-city code ordinances, and you have to get permits for it. And I spoke with the staff about it. They said it's about two percent of the total cost for the city permitting for it, which is, which is not so bad. And as long as we do it the right way, I think this definitely helps our single-family residential homeowners in the city. And it also tackles the national problem, the county problem that we have with affordable housing and units for rent for those to live in. So I'm all for this, and I second the motion.
I have a motion. I have a second. Commissioner Llewellyn?
I was just going to second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. City Clerk, please call it to roll.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramoli?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Before I vote, one more thing I wanted to point out I forgot to mention. When you go around Dania Beach, when you go along a lot of South Florida, a lot of these properties were built like this. And you could see them, especially in southwest Dania, our older neighborhood, you can see that they have the mother-in-law quarters. And, you know, go throughout Hollywood, even Northern South Lake, you could see it as well. So this is something that was actually here in the beginning. And I'm happy that we're addressing this, and it's probably going to be preempted anyways by the state. You know, and the county created this also. So, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven point two passes unanimously. On to item point twelve, second reading ordinances. There are none. So we will move on to item thirteen point one, discussion and possible action clarification of the Damarino Autism Family Awareness Sunday. And I believe there was some issue with how the funds were going to be dispersed. So, City Clerk, do you want to give a, shed a little bit more light on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. During that discussion at your last meeting, you all were having discussions, but your microphones were off. So I know there was a lot of discussion about where the funds would go, who was gonna take from where. The one thing I know is that the city manager was going to contribute $1,000 from her contingency. I just wasn't sure, in the beginning, there was discussion about 200, 2,500 from commission, but then it kind of started to divvy up. So I just wanted to get on the record what the actual distribution will be to reach that $5,000 that you all wanted to contribute.
So it was, the sponsorship was 2,500, and then we started divvying it up to make it 5,000. So what I'm, I'm recommending or suggesting, if we just take 4,000 from the commission contingency, from the commission, and along with the city manager's 1,000, then we have 5,000 for the sponsorship. And I'm seeking consensus for that. All right.
Perfect, thank you, that was easy.
You're welcome.
Next, we have item 13.2 advisory board clarifications from the city clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So at your January 14th commission meeting, there was some discussion about the want for some board qualifications. Most of your boards do have qualifications already listed within the manual. There were only two that didn't, which was your Parks and Rec Board and your Planning and Zoning Board. In your packet, I provided you with a recommendation from Community Development for your Planning and Zoning Board qualifications. As for Parks and Rec, Cassie reached out to other municipalities to see what they have for qualifications for the Parks and Rec Board. None had qualifications. So we, we kind of didn't want to either limit ourselves either with that, just because we already know that sometimes there could be a challenge to appoint and get volunteers to serve on the board. So we did, which I provided to you as well in front of the day, is, is a recommendation that doesn't really make it a requirement, but more of a recommendation. And I think I gave all of my copies to you. Do you have one in front of you?
I have one.
Of some language. Do you have one in front of you? I think I handed them all out and then didn't keep one for myself. Perfect. So it's not really required, but it's more of a recommendation that what you would possibly like to see as a board member. So the language would be, it is recommended that the appointees be engaged in recreation activities, parks, physical activities, and/or programs or related experiences. Of course, at the end, it's your decision, if you want to add something, take something out, it's completely up to you for both of the boards. So I just wanted to introduce the item and leave it up for your discussion and direction.
I'm fine with the generalized definition. Do I have consensus from the commission? Yep, we have consensus.
Are you okay with both recommendations for both boards?
Yes.
I do, I do have a question. These are, these are just recommendations, that they're not requirements, correct?
Correct, yes, most of them, most of the other board qualifications are, I believe, listed as recommendations, unless they're specific boards, like the Art and Public Places Board, that's very specific, so it depends on the board.
That's a, that's a good guideline for us to follow to try to find people for advisory boards. It's tough to find them, but it'll help.
We don't want to limit you either, so, yes.
All right, thank you, City Clerk, thank you, Vice Ma- Vice Mayor. And then we are now on to item 13.3, the naming of the Southwest Community Center sponsored by Commissioner Lori Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first of all, this is not with regard to another elected official. This is somebody who is not an elected official. I, 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 the, the Southwest Community Center has a lengthy history. It is used by a few different groups, it's been used by a number of community organizations over the years. There is an individual who passed away a couple of years ago, year and a half ago, on November 8th, 2023, who lives in that neighborhood, or lived in that neighborhood, and served a, a large contribution to the city of Dania Beach during the many years that she has lived, did live in this city, and that would be Carolyn Jones. I'm not seeking a vote tonight. I wanted to make sure that you all kind of knew where I was going with this and why I was doing it. I think most of you knew Carolyn in one way or another, but I can tell you that she was truly a community leader. She was a former educator, she served on a number of boards in the city. She was instrumental in, in the original MLK program that was started with the city. She also was very involved with the Women's Club. She was in, she was on the Police and Fire Pension Board while, while she was with us. She also made a significant contribution with making people aware, giving, doing awareness with regard to breast cancer in particular, which is ultimately what she, what she succumbed to at the end. And she did a lot of things to try to educate people to some women's health issues in general. And given the fact that this is Women's History Month, I wanted to bring it at this time because I wanted you all to kind of see where I was going with it. Something, and, and I can tell you that we are working towards the process. I know there may be some changes to the process that may come before us, but I have a feeling that the criteria may still fit, regardless of what those changes are. And the reason why I say that is because there was a lasting impact that she made in this city. And that is, she started up an organization, started up a ministry, basically, dealing with breast cancer awareness and cancer awareness in general. That, that continues to this day, and it is stronger and stronger every year. There, there was an entire program for the entire month of October with speakers coming. Congresswoman Wasserman Schultz comes every year. There is a walk that is done for awareness, for cancer awareness. And in, in addition to that, she also worked with Memorial Hospital to try to assist with more awareness for these things. She also introduced me to another organization that I used as well to, to try to get other women's issues out there, where they not only talked about breast cancer or other cancers, but also heart disease, where they had volunteers that were going, they would come to the Southwest Conference Community Center. They would go out, they would knock on doors, make people aware of the issues that were going on. And the next day, people would be able to come and get free mammograms at the center. And so this was something that went on for a, a number of years. I couldn't even, our husband's here tonight, he might be able to clarify further, but it was many, many years, long before I was a part of the city. And she really did have a lasting contribution that continues to this day. Something else that I'm doing, and we are working towards filling out the correct paperwork and doing everything that needs to be done with it. There, there are also signatures being collected as far as people who are in favor of it. Every person that I have spoken to about it thought it was a wonderful idea, and thought it was very fitting. But part of this is also because this is a community center, it's not a park, it's not a, any other type of a building, it's a community center. And I am reaching out actually to a couple of different healthcare organizations to see if they will also sponsor this naming of the facility so that they would actually defray some of the cost. So it's not fully baked at this point, I just kind of wanted to let everybody know what was going on and see if you had any thoughts on the, on the issue, or if there was anything that you wanted to add to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Anyone else from the commission want to weigh in on this? I, I will just say, I do think it's a good idea to get signatures, it's a good idea to get community buy-in from, you know, a, a, a good portion of the community. And when you have that buy-in, then it, it kind of solidifies that nomination. So thank you for bringing that forward and shedding some light on the direction that you're going, Commissioner Llewellyn. Next, we have item 13.4, which is the discussion of the Nyberg Swanson House, and also sponsored by Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes, and I, I know we just had the ribbon cutting, and I, and I was talking to, actually from our last meeting, I didn't feel like it was clear as to what we were gonna do with the Nyberg Swanson House and who was going in there. It's a very coveted spot, lots of people want, want the space. And I just feel like we need to have some sort of a plan, and I don't want to wait until our strategic plan, planning session to start talking about it. So I thought we could talk about it a little bit here as far as what sort of criteria we would want in order to have the right individuals go into that particular facility. My personal feeling is that I think everybody, anybody who wants to be in that building needs to have a plan, and we need to know what that plan is, what they intend to do with it. Shared space, not shared space, that sort of thing. And I think, I just think we all need to know what everybody's ideas are. I don't know if we can do some sort of an application, but something so that we have a better sense of it.
Do we have any further discussion from the commission on this item? Commissioner Ramoli?
Yeah, I'll just concur with Commissioner Llewellyn, and I think that's what we need to do, is go through the process of providing some sort of avocation, or I, I would just like to know whoever does occupy that space has legitimate plan to use it with hours of operation, you know, staff, and whatever it is it's gonna be used for, it should be something that is planned out, that we have a better idea or an idea of what it is, so that we can all make a educated decision here.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoli. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, as wonderful it was to celebrate the Nyberg Swanson House, we have to figure out what we're gonna do with it in the future. It, it basically comes down to two groups that are interested in it. It's our Chamber of Commerce, that was the Chamber of Commerce House, I think, since 2003. And, you know, the Historical Society has worked closely with us regarding restoring the Nyberg Swanson House, big supporters of it, and they put on a nice little display, even at the, the grand opening, where we saw a video of them moving the house. But it being a historical house, there definitely should be some historic memorabilia in it. And I, I spoke with the manager about this also. You can't just give the house to somebody and they put like office chairs in there after we spent a million dollars restoring it. There has to be an agreement that we come up with in, in how to maintain that house and keep it pristine, keep it historic with the, you know, grueling process that we went through to get that established. And this is actually a moving issue, because we're, we're, we're close in negotiations to purchasing the MC Frost House. We're, we're right there, and what are we gonna do with that house also? So down the future, that could be a wonderful spot for the Chamber of Commerce, or to have historical significance in it as well. With this, this being the chamber house since 2003, and then when the Nyberg Swanson House shut down in 2019, it's been vacated for what, several years now? So it definitely is a tricky situation, but that's why we're the commission, we should talk about it, and we should air it out in the public. I would, you know, my personal idea of I think everybody could get along is we have one office in there for the Chamber of Commerce temporarily, and then we have a display for the, for the history of Dania Beach, and being able to store some of our historical documents properly in that house as well throughout the rest of the house. And we would have to come up with volunteers who man the historical property, at least. I, I think in some cities, they do it like on the weekends from nine to three or something like that. So we have to get that commitment and that agreement from the Historical Society also. And same thing with the Chamber of Commerce, we have to know what they're gonna use it for also, not just to keep it as just a blank office. So there's multiple issues that, multiple uses that we can use for, but it comes down to the Chamber and the Historical Society. It comes down also that we're purchasing another historical property, hopefully, and, and then what are we gonna do with that? So I, I'm willing to discuss this openly, I'm very grateful that Commissioner Llewellyn brought this up, and I'd be happy to hear about what the city and what the commission thinks as well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. I, I will weigh in on this, because I, again, this just makes it another opportunity for me to thank our entire city team who worked on this project for making the Nyberg Swanson, Newberg Swanson House such an amazing renovation and restoring it. It should definitely have a historical purpose and be used for historical purpose. But again, I'm just gonna be consistent with what I said, that, you know, we as the commission should outline what that criteria is, because I do want people to make sure that they are, you know, if people want to come visit, you know, the, the, the house or the Nyberg Swanson House, I can't get it right. But that they, they know what hours they can be there, they know, you know, what, what, how is it gonna be used? And so we do need a more definitive plan, and I'm happy to have, you know, a compromise with, with seeing how that's going to be used. And so if you have a full plan, you come, have a presentation, I, that's what I'd really like to be able to see. And we can do that to me further at the, at the strategic planning meeting, because I think we, we need to make sure that that house is used fully, as we have invested a great amount of funding into it, and we want to make sure that it is being used on a regular basis for the purposes that we seek. So, thank you for bringing that up, and, sure. City Attorney?
Thank you so much. I, the only thing I would ask is perhaps just clear direction from you all. I'd like to be able to move this, the Historic Society stuff out of the office that my Assistant City Attorney needs. It's been there for over a year and maybe 15 months, 18 months, and I had no problem giving up the office, but I kind of need it now.
So I, I would say that they should be able to move their historical items in there if, if, if they need to. At some point, I think we all agree that it should be used for historical purposes, so, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I, I was just gonna say, I think we need some sort of an application process. I think that if we have a, I don't know if we need a document filled out, or we need submissions by a certain date or something, but I think that's what we really need from any individual that's looking to move into that location. That would, go ahead.
I made my mayor. So, we went in there, Eve, myself, and, and Commissioner Ryan, because there was all these filing cabinets. And we thought, oh my God, all these filing cabinets are full. No, they're not. There, there's a significant amount of, of photos and things like that, and so grateful for all the work that Joanna and, and her group has, has, has done to get us to where we're at today. And, and I think that we can move that and, and store it in, in a way that will, will not compromise the integrity and/or further damage, because some of them are really old, but they're amazing. So if we're able to, to, to put them in a place until you guys decide what the game plan is going to be?
In a different place.
In a, in a different place, or, or even in, in one of the, the rooms at the Nyberg, at, you know? Well, you know, you know what? The Vice Mayor is very generous, and, and we have enough space there to be able to put it. What I don't want to do is put all broken-down equipment or filing cabinets in this restored, because it, we want it, we've, we've come this far to not come this far and do it right. So we, we would store the, the documents, get rid of those filing cabinets, they're not historical. I just want to put that on the record, they're not historical, they're, yeah, and they're really bad shape. So we'll move them to Commissioner, eh, Vice Mayor's office and, and, and put them in a nice, safe environment, and then we can come up with a game plan. But I do agree, we would procure the desk and chairs to be of that period, and so we could work with our procurement team and everything, because we just want to make sure that everything fits.
You get something from the building fund.
Thank you so much for being such a good team.
I truly appreciate it, and so does Lou. Thank you, City Manager. So the direction then is to come up with a specific process before we move forward, to have a game plan for how we would store those documents, how we're going to use the space, how, how we're gonna procure all of the furniture and all of the, the things that, that would be needed to go into it. So we're just, we're almost there, you know, and, and I just think we have a little bit more to go. And I think that's a great point, City Manager, that we want to make sure that we do it right, and that I believe everybody will be happy, but nobody can deny the amount of work and the amount of energy that the Historical Society has put into this building. I can't, I know you're gonna do some amazing things with it, we just have to finalize and hash out the details, and I think we can do that pretty quickly. And I believe, when is our strategic planning meeting, City? The end of this month, so it, it, it's coming rather quickly, thank you, City Manager. All right, item 14. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Ryan?
All right, we're almost through this. I, I just wanted to clarify. All right, we're almost through this. I just wanted to clarify, we're going to put out an application for the use of the Nyberg Swanson House? Not Newberg Swanson House? Is that, is that what the direction was? We're going to put out like?
I think, yeah, I don't think an application, I think a presentation of how it's going to be used.
Is it going to be like an open, is it going to be like an open application or presentation? So like anybody could submit it?
No, I think it's probably between the two that you mentioned.
All right. I just don't want to make it, you know what I mean? Yeah, I don't want to make it divisive either.
Well, you, you know that, that we're almost there with the MC. So you really have an opportunity for one to be at the Nyberg Swanson and for the other, like the Chamber to be at the MC. That's just a suggestion because we want to hold people accountable and if you have the shared thing, then, I don't know, it was them, it was us.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. I just want to be very clear on how we do it. And, and like you said, this comes down to the Historical Society and the Chamber of Commerce, but you know, what if like Alliance Club comes in and says, hey, yeah, we've got a good use for the Improvement Committee. You know, I'm just saying, we have other civic associations in the community. So we just want to be careful.
No, I think, I think we keep it between the two organizations, let them present. And I mean, I just only think that it's just between them because the Chamber was there initially and they feel strongly about it. The Historical Society fought for years to make sure that it happened. So let's keep it between those two organizations, give a presentation. They may not want, they may not feel that they have space to, you know, share with the Chamber. I don't know what that presentation is and the Chamber can also make their case for, you know, how they would want to use it and how they're going to bring business and I, I would love, you know, to see a compromise in some way. But, you know, that would be up to them to propose that in their presentation and let the two groups come and we can put them on the agenda to do their presentations and then while we get the rest of the things ready and procurement in the background.
Yes, so they could do the presentation here, they could do the presentation before the commencement of their strategic workshop. It's up to you. We'll follow your lead.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to be clear to avoid any confusion, that's all. So.
So our next commission meeting isn't until the 31st and our strategic planning meeting is on the 29th. So we wouldn't even have time for them to present before we had the strategic planning meeting.
That would be correct.
All right. So let's just.
They could lobby us individually. Exactly. All right. Thank you. Thank you. My comments are.
So we have direction. Are we good, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. So everything that's in that room minus the filing, yeah, they don't. We will place it very carefully and in a, in a very proper fashion in the Vice Mayor's office.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. I think we're, we're good to go on that. And we can move on to item 14. Appointments. City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, you had Douglas Hasty?
Yes, Douglas Hasty for my Dania Beach Housing Authority appointment.
Yes.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Consensus? Do I have consensus to approve Douglas Hasty? He was recommended by the chair, the commissioner for the Dania Beach Housing Authority, Bob Adams. So he is very well qualified. If you'd like to see his resume, I'm happy to share it with you. Right? Have consensus. It's moving on. All right. Thank you, City Clerk. And now we are getting down to the commission comments and we will start with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. Very, very brief tonight. I will say that I'm happy to see that we passed. Really? He's looking at his watch. Anyway, I was happy to see that we passed the consent agenda. It was one of the things on the, on the consent agenda was something that I bring every year and that is scholarships basically for Dania Beach kids to go to our spring break camp. I also do it for summer camp, also do it for winter, whatever camps we have. And I'm only going to really get a few more chances to do that before I am termed out. And I really hope that people that are on the dais continue that tradition because I will tell you that it's a great investment. I hear, always hear great feedback from Parks and Rec, from the City Manager, from the kids and the families. We have a lot of young people that would not otherwise be able to afford to go to our camps. And this gives them an opportunity to go and keeps them busy, keeps them off the street, gets, lets them meet other people, helps them find other hobbies and things that they might be interested in instead of, you know, idle hands and getting into some kind of trouble. So it's just something that I think is a really good investment in, in our future. The other thing, let's see, Dania After Dark was amazing and huge and I don't even think I saw everything that was going on there because I know I missed a few things, but it was a lot of fun. And I just kind of, I mean, you know, I had, look, I had a little puppy with me too, so it was a thing. But we, it was, you know, it was amazing. And the amount of people that were there, I took a video from the stage and showed it to several people and everyone's just amazed at how many people were there. And again, not an incident. It's amazing that we can do this and kudos to our, our public safety for doing that. And I, I did, we are going to have to talk more about the beach and we're going to have to talk more about the parking situation. Not now, but we do need to have a conversation about it because I think it's something that we really need to address. I went, I tried to go down there on Sunday and it was insane and I can only imagine what's going to happen once Lucky Fish opens. So despite the fact that we do have extra parking, I still think there's going to be some problems. So hopefully we can come back and give a report on that as to some ideas, some solutions as to what we can do to make sure that everything goes smoothly and we don't end up having other issues. With that, I don't have anything else and thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. We are on to Commissioner Ramoli.
I'll make this real brief. Just a reminder that the commission, we have the Prestige Club at a class tomorrow at elementary or Collins Elementary tomorrow at Tropical Steakhouse, Tropica, excuse me. And Channel 10 will be there to film, so it's important that as many of us go there as possible. 10:30 a.m. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoli. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Yeah, to Commissioner Ramoli's point, don't we have the, we have the Love, the Love mural? We have been cutting at 10:30 also? Yeah, I'm going to try and ten both. See how we can do it. Yeah. So I'll do my best. And yes, everything's been wonderful with the events that we had. We have our last Dania After Dark coming up in April, Blues and Barbecue. The Seafood and Wine Festival is very successful, nothing but great feedback. I appreciate all the work that our first responders are doing, especially our, our BSO police, what they're doing at Dania Point and what they've done for Dania After Dark and, you know, also throughout our waterways, down at the beach, top of the line guys. I've gotten nothing but compliments about our BSO, police officers and firefighters and can't commend them enough and the leadership from Chief Pelisser and Captain Thrall. So keep up the good work, guys. I know sometimes it gets frustrating, but you know, we got your back. And yeah, today we had a lot, a lot accomplished, you know, made some changes with the CRA. So looking forward to seeing how that goes under the city management purview. I know it's going to be positive and it's never failed us. And yep, that's pretty much all I have to say. Everybody have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Vice Mayor Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Today, the City Manager and I had a meeting at the Quarter Deck for the parking. So we have, can I give them an update? Is it okay? Okay. So first of all, you know, the parking is a problem, but it's, it's usually on the weekends. And I think the city staff is, you know, in the direction of the manager has come up with a lot of good plans. And I was very happy to hear today what's going on. I'll just sum it up for you a little bit, that the, the school has, we have a contract with the school that we will have 100 parking spaces there and with those 100 parking spaces that are there. FAU, FAU, FAU School will have 100 parking spaces there. And they're trying to arrange and probably will arrange valet parking for the opportunity from Lucky Fish and from the Quarter Deck to use the valet parking there, which would be a smart move for people because your valet, you pay only one price instead of paying by the meter. So that would be an opportunity. Along with that, the casino has given us 50 spots and we are going to provide a shuttle service for the employees down to the beach. And they will be able and possibly if somebody at the casino, during their gambling, maybe the casino let them bring passengers, who knows, down to the beach and eliminate some of the congestion down there. So the 50, 50 parking spots at the casino will be utilized for the city, for the city, for the employees of the Quarter Deck and the Lucky Fish. We'll eliminate 50 more spots down there on the beach to open up. Plus, we've already started revamping the, the striping and the paving on the beach, which is allowing us what, 30? Forty additional parking spots. And so with that being said, we've opened up over 190 parking spots, you know, cumulative between the three spaces. One thing that came up today and I, and we're going to, we're going to advertise it and the Quarter Decks can advertise it and we're going to have a conversation with Lucky Fish. I don't know, there's, people complain about the parking price of $5 an hour, which we still are the lowest priced out there at, at any beach. And the thing about us is, you know, they, they come to the beach for two reasons. They come to the beach, the beach, and they come down there to eat. And there's, if you can name any other beaches that are that close to getting out of your car and walking to the water or walking to a restaurant, it's hard to find that on any beach year round. So being the lowest priced out there and, and paying $5 an hour is one thing. Conversation did come up with the Quarter Deck, well, we have a lunch specials that are $6.95 or $7.95. They have to pay $10 to park there for two hours. Well, you know, it costs us money to maintain a million point two to the pier, repay the parking, restripe the parking and so on. So it, we're not putting money in our pocket, we're reinvesting it back into the beach. Along with that though, maybe the, we, we're going to do a better job and the Quarter Deck promised to work with us and we'll get with Lucky Fish and us. You got to remember something. If you're a Dania Beach resident, you can buy a parking pass for less than $50. You can buy a senior's parking pass for less than that and you can even buy a non-resident pass for, I think, $150. Is that correct? I, I think I'm pretty correct on that. So you have the opportunity to buy passes that you don't have to pay that if you're an active person that goes to the beach. I don't know if everybody's aware of that. I mean, so if you're complaining about the price, there's three or four options. I just gave you valet, buy a parking pass for the regular, seniors and a non-resident. So with that being said, I think the parking on the beach is going to be a better, but it's only going to be on the weekends. And I know that they closed the, the road down, but you have to understand that they close that road down to go to the beach when there's, when it's full is for public safety so that if an ambulance has to come in there or a police department has to come in there, we have to be able to get to where we have to go without blocking the parking up. Pretty much covered it. Did I, City Manager?
Yes, sir. And I, and I also want to add, you have capacity, whether it's in the room or the beach. Our beach is X amount of linear fee. So even if we said, hey, we have all the money in the world, let's build a 10-story parking garage. First of all, it would take away from the natural environment and people are not going to be packed like sardines.
Right.
So there are limitations. So I think with the 190 now Candido and I have identified another 60 that we can have with a partnership with, with Hollywood. But at the end of the day, unless our beach is going to grow, we can grow more parking, but that's not, it's going to take away from what we want our beach to be. So just consider that.
And you know, and some of the other things that are coming to the beach, as you see the pirate ship that's down there now that has become pretty active, people could go down there and fight. His name was Captain Black Jack?
Black Sparrow.
Black Sparrow, whatever you call him. Jack Black Sparrow. He's the Black Sparrow, is it? All right, well, anyhow, he's introducing, getting his car and said, okay. Anyhow, then also with the Quarter Deck is still in consideration to put the three kiosks outside, which will be maybe with umbrellas and so on. So, you know, the beach is going to improve. We're going to, you know, we have to, we have to charge $5 to maintain that beach. That beach is active. It's, it's beautiful. It's, I mean, every, a lot of people want to come there because of the size of the beach. So I'm just trying to explain where we're at with this and I think that we're pretty favorable on our pricing that's out there and I just gave you some more opportunities. With that, I've talked enough, so thank you. Okay, well, tonight was my turn, okay?
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that's the most I've heard you say all year.
You what? Was it impressive?
Sorry, Mayor Davis. I just want to add to this conversation also. Been having discussions with City Manager and City Staff and Deputy Manager and I'm trying to bring Water Taxi Stop into the pier. Yeah. And so when we do that, you're bringing people by sea and you're bringing people from other cities also. So I wanted to discuss that publicly because I can't talk to you guys about that privately. But yeah, that's a big initiative that we're trying to accomplish and, you know, with the support of the City Commission, I, I think we could pull it off. So we're, we're already in works for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for bringing that up and adding that. And I think with the innovation on this team, there's nothing we can't do, but you're right, City Manager, we don't want to overcrowd it, but we do want to think in different ways to maximize the space that we do have. You guys know, nobody loves the beach as much as I do and so we, we, I have been hearing the concerns about the parking, about, you know, all the different things that are coming. But I, I just want to compliment our public services team who maintains that beach every single day. I saw the green strapping, striping that's going to be for valet and they are doing a wonderful, wonderful job. And I am, I, I don't think the beach has looked more beautiful than it does right now. We will, we are going to be doing the ribbon cutting for the Love mural and I do apologize for the conflict. It's just that the artist will be flying to California the next day and we just wanted to maximize the time while he was here and that we had invited many members of the art board and the sponsors who really want to be a part of the ribbon cutting. It looks absolutely beautiful. There was one little hiccup and I will take responsibility for that and I will share with the mayor, I mean, with the Vice Mayor and commission that there are going to be nine Love murals in the county of Broward County. And so I think ours looks the absolute best so far and I hope you come out till 10:30 to see it. But I think La Solis was first, Plantation was second. And you will see that they both have Love in there, which is the theme, but you have La Solis, Love. You have Plantation, one, one Love Plantation. And then we did not identify Dania Beach. And so at the last minute, we did add the term, we did identify our Dania Beach on there. And so that was a cost of $7,000. But they are going to put a little design on there to make it beautiful as well. So, but I wanted our city's name to be on there because I think that we deserve to be identified as just like the other cities. And so we are going to take that back to the art board. Either way, we will get the, the funds paid for. If it comes out of my contingency, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I did not want to let the artist leave and not have Dania Beach recognized on, on that, on the, on the mural. Next, we have the, I will go back and say that we had the, I will, I just have to reiterate. I think this was the most fun Dania After Dark. This was the most fun art and seafood festival that I've been to in all of the time that I have been here. I think the music, the vibe, the energy that was created was just beautiful. It was safe and we stayed to the end and people did not want it to end. So again, thank you to our Parks and Recreation, to Cassie, to everyone who made that event possible because it was just super stellar. Next, I attended Career Source Broward. They asked for us to come and do a tour of their facility in Davie. As you all know, we have the Summer Youth Employment Program with them that we invest. But they also have programs. What I learned is that they also have programs for seniors. They have programs for veterans. They have a lot of different, they have, and they have programs for youth that expose them to a myriad of career opportunities. So I will be looking at different things, maybe potential partnerships with that in the future, but I wanted to put that on the record. We did have a great lunch, lunch in the first Fridays. If you missed it, you really missed it with Captain Mast and Guora. What's his last name? Guora Israel. And he turned, I mean, it was just a phenomenal luncheon with PEA. Lori does a wonderful job, but this particular presentation and luncheon was just phenomenal. And so I want to thank the PEA for being great partners with us. Next, we had the Rose Awards, which 15 of our, 15 employees from the Marriott were recognized, the frontline. The frontline hospitality workers, the ones who greet you and the ones who say hello to you in the hotel, the frontline cooks, all the people who actually make the, they're our equivalent to public services. They had those awards and so 15 employees who work at the Marriott Dania Point were recognized. And I always think it's just wonderful to recognize those in the service industry. So congratulations to them and congratulations to Daniel Lamb, who is the general manager and the new president of F R L A. And with that, I want to thank everyone. I know we don't agree all the time on the way that we're going to get there, but I do want to say that I appreciate this team's professionalism, this team's responsiveness. And I think that as long as we work together, there's nothing we can't accomplish. So thank you, everyone, and have a great night.